I'd like to inform that we did have a 6:30 to 7:00 reception meeting.
A legislative report.
I just wanted to comment a few things. One, the PSBA president will be in Western PA on July 7th to 8th. The 7th of August, instead of Ace and Earl. If you know, we can discuss public education concerns. So if anybody did not see this, enter the mail saying they were hoping that. And also just to bring up something else we got from PSBA reporting Senate Bill 6. This morning, the Senate Education Committee reported on Senate Bill 6, which is legislation that established a state process designed to take over academically struggling schools by removing them from the governance of the local school boards and transferring them to a new state entity that must take various recovery steps, of which there were five choices, one of them being that we sold them closed and that we privately operated charter schools. Another was by municipal cap staff. So definitely look into this. Make sure you get along with your senators to see what way they're rotating. Senator Moore here has had this bill because this would be a big concern as usual to be a burden to taxpayers as if the students were to go elsewhere or have a charter school, there is still being charged and paying for it. And that's the legislative report. Education, Lenny, he is Mrs. Lenny, he's not here. We'll start with Mr. Martin.
The day one meeting, we've recorded that's for your review. And the only other thing that I would note is that we currently have 227 students who roll for kindergarten through the hall. Can you be updated on that number?
Yes, we are at the end of the year, obviously. It has finished out our last day of some professional development for teachers. And they're looking forward to summer workshops as well as professional development in the semester. And then the agenda items for next week, detachment to the returning new story agreement for the remainder of the year, 15-year, returning new story expanded school agreement except tuition rates for the following year, approved overnight out of state across country team trip. And as we usually already approved, this one always comes in later, so we have to separate. And then also, the agenda is approving the interim for the senior that we're pretty working with in the school. The next curriculum committee meeting will be Tuesday, August 11th at 5:30 here. That report, my name is Mrs. Lenny.
Thank you. Next week, we will have on the agenda, reducing more items for pressure for reports of the same bills in the budgetary transfer. We did have an appearance by Mr. Cassidy from the Dan Frey Insurance Board Fund meeting and report on that.
Yes, Dan, and Mr. Cassidy, who's any of a make tonight. So like introduce Carl Isman. He's going to review the real rates for next week.
Good evening, everyone, and on behalf of Dan Frey Insurance, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I believe Dan has included a letter from Richard in everyone's packet. And if I could just go through and hit some of the highlights. Anybody has any questions, please feel free to interrupt me or stop me or even ask again. I'm gonna have to put on my reading glasses here, sorry about that. We are recommending that the property and liability coverages stay with the PSBA insurance trust program. The premium went from $94,402 to $98,571. This is a 4.4% increase. However, the property values increased about a little over $4 million, which is 2.3%, and that created most of the increase. Also, to the package this year with the PSBA trust, they made some changes to the betterment for the school districts. The annual aggregate on the liability policy increased from $2 million to $3 million. The business income limit increased from $500,000 to $1 million. The flood limit increased from $1 million to $3 million. Urgent movement increased $3 million to $100 million. And backup of sewer and drains are now covered for the full policy limit. On page two, the commercial auto is remains the theory of basically, there are no changes. The next item is the workers' comp with Highmark Casualty Insurance Company. The premium was reduced from $115,667 to $108,560. This was a decrease of 6.1%, even with an increase of payroll of 2%. Your experience mod became a little more favorable. It went from 1.074 to 0.98. So that's a good factor. It went down 8.7%. Also, in January of 2016, you will be, there will be a pending dividend of $14,833 coming to the school district. I'd like to also congratulate the school district for your experience mod going down and also qualifying for a dividend because that's great teamwork between the school district, the administrators, and Highmark in controlling your losses and reducing and creating a better experience, which in turn you're rewarded for. On page three is your school leaders' errors and omissions through the Old Republic PSBA program. There was a slight increase of 3% from $18,747 to $19,326 primarily across Pennsylvania. The air, school leaders' errors and omission seems to be the policy that has the majority of the claims due to the legal climate in the state. And so everybody has seen a little bit of increase in their school district programs on that. And 3% is from the districts we ensure it's very good, so your claims are excellent. The umbrella also had a decrease of 8.6%. It went from $10,605 to $9,684. And page four, the items there are student accident, the employee travel accident, crime policy, and public officials. There are no major changes, and those coverages remain with current carrier. On page five is your privacy and network liability, cyber liability. That had a slight increase from $8,446 to $9,291. And fund, data breach fund limit increased from $50,000 to $100,000. And also, if you utilize the school district or the carriers' data breach team is utilized, your limit actually goes to $500,000. And it covers your privacy liability, identity theft, network security, internet media liability, and side load excursion. And page six, the final page of the letter. All in all, your school district insurance went from $270,207 to $268,578, which is a 1% decrease, even though your payroll increased 2% and also your property values increased. We strongly recommend the 2015 PSBA insurance trust program for your coverages. We also highly recommend the Highmark Casualty Insurance Company for the workers' compensation. And for the remaining auto, travel accident, student accident, cyber and bonds, we recommend renewing each with its incumbent insurance carrier. Also, your least professional renews on August 25th. We are working on that renewal. We don't have those numbers, but we are hoping that that number will stay in line with the expiry. And then if there's any questions for any of the members, I'd be happy to answer.
If I had to type them just, I know that we talked about this previously, but I just think it's really worked for revisiting. The workers' comp years ago, we were paying over $200,000 a year in workers' comp. We had no real light duty current work policy. Safety committee was not in tag. Since then, we now have a safety committee. We have a process for getting employees back to work. And it's paid off huge dividends. We had worked with a company for years called Old Republic. And when we switched to Highmark, they were newer carrier in market. We were a little iffy about it. It's really paid off, we've reduced those premiums, and now we're starting to get paybacks from the dividends by our good claims experience. So, you know, kudos to the board for years ago supporting that decision because it's really worked out well.
And in addition to what Dan said, the other nice thing about Highmark that we see with school districts is they utilize a physician panel. And a lot of the cases where if you're using the physician panels that they recommend, which are usually Highmark doctors, they get a reduced fee. So that's more savings to the school district and a nice benefit that helps reduce your losses.
So if anybody has any questions on any of the coverages, please contact me before next week. I'll get touch with Carl and or Richard to give a response to that. But if not, we'll ask your approval for next week. Thanks, Carl.
Okay, thank you all very much, and have a great evening.
And the next item is on the agenda of the line of the unusual thing what we do to bring in action of 511 and 511 taxes, capital tax, Tom's favorite, and extension of the section 1.5 cash benefits act. And then I would urge you to look at the grants and donations attachments for both that item and for the Siviski Fund grants and the educational grant. They're interesting. I don't know where the International Literacy Association conference is.
I want to say Tennessee again, and I don't necessarily, I will.
It is hard on the expectation rate. But it's not, I think, what the Siviski Fund grants are, even though they're large real big numbers, but they're totally interesting. Over $2,000. And there's interesting small things that teachers ask for or anything to rank for. And now we're getting to the big item on the tonight, the adoption of the 2015 budget expenditure total that we're looking at will be about $53,379,000. That's an increase of slightly less than $2.2 million or around 4%, okay? What makes up that $2.2 million, for the most part, is Peasars retirement. That was the gist of my presentation at the main meeting. We talked a lot about Peasars retirement and the impact that it has on the school district's budget, not only next year, but in previous years, as well as in future years, which I'll get to in a little bit. Peasars retirement makes up about $1.2 million of the $2.2 million increase expenditures. It was a 24% increase over and above the prior year. The rate, the employer contribution rate is going from 21.4% to 25.4%. And again, that is state law. That's nothing that is determined at the local level. That's nothing that's set by our school district or our school board. It's a state law. So Peasars retirement makes up 54% of our total increase. So once again, as we've talked about over the previous several years, the majority of the increases that we are experiencing are out of our control. Salaries are increasing by $661,000, 43%. That $661,000 is spread over 453,400, okay? Medical insurance is going up by $204,000, 45%. I think you've heard us say before that the premium rates increased by 4%. The additional 1% is we're recommending adding back benefits to our personal care systems under the Affordable Care Act. Anybody working for $30 a week, you're required to offer benefits to. We made a decision a few years back that anybody hired as a personal care system after July 1st, 2011, that we're not going to be afforded benefits, but to be grandfather anybody in who was hired prior to that. Well, now we're going to operate digital benefits for the entire group. That's an additional cost of around $40,000, and it makes up that additional percent to get it to 5%. Transportation, we're looking at an increase of $136,000, 45%. Two years ago, we went up on RFP for transportation. We negotiated a 5% decrease in the first year. In the second year, we negotiated a rate freeze. This is the first year of an increase since we've had the new carrier. It's a 3% increase. The additional 2%, we've had to add four additional special education bands. Again, that's sort of out of our control based on the needs of those students and the locations where they need to be trained. We had to increase four bands in this current school year. And then just to reconcile, in case anybody's doing the math, there are other areas above $1,801 decrease, which gets back to reconcile the previous street. Expenditure history, I didn't want to lose sight of this because we talked a lot about it at May, and anybody I thought that may be in the audience that didn't attend the May meeting, I wanted to highlight this again, okay? 2009-10 actual expenditures, $47,196 less Peasars retirement. So if we take Peasars retirement up, that's how much our actual expenditures were. 2015-16, we're proposing that our expenditures will equal $47,459,000 after you back off Peasars retirement portion. That's a $262,000 increase over six years, 4.56%. If you take it as average, it's less than a $44,000 increase per year over six, over a six-year period. So we've talked about $45,000 budget, and it's only increasing by about $44,000 after you back out again after Peasars. We've been doing some pretty good things here. As we've talked about in the main meeting, again, we've also been able to accomplish a lot of good things educationally and done things to benefit our students at the same time. So I don't want you to think we're pinching pennies so much that we're not merely losing our students on community. I believe we're good about that. Okay, revenues, 2015-16 budget revenues, $53,042. That's a $1.8 million increase of 3.5%. What makes up that $1.8 million? From a local level, we're looking at an increase of $744,000. Real estate tax collection makes up about $250,000. You see, I noted their county report. The county releases its assess value reports every year. We're very fortunate in Regulator School District, ours went up by about $3.3 million, which means that there is some growth and development within our community, which is a very positive sign. As a result of that $3.3 million increase assess value, it naturally generates about $250,000 more in revenue, in real estate revenue from the district. Our income tax, we're finally bumping that budget line item up to $3.6 million, which is a $350,000 increase, and that's largely the result of Act 32 and the requirement that all employers, employer, I'm sorry, earned income tax. Over the last several years, you know, we went from like $3.1 million, all of a sudden it jumped up to, you know, $3.5. We slid it up to $3.2, and then our budget went to $3.6. Well, it's been there two consecutive years, so we feel that it is reasonable to adjust accordingly. So that's where the $350 is coming from. The link to real estate tax collection, the group recommended to increase by $50,000. That's based on trend. We always look back, you know, five, 10 years to see how it would trend, and we believe that we can increase that by about $50,000. State revenue, we're looking at an increase of a little over $1 million, the majority of that is from Peasars retirement. Again, state law requires that the state reimburse 50% of our increases, so that generates an additional $581,000. The other categories listed there, basic ed subsidies, special ed accountability, block grant, and charter school. Governor Wolf did his, released his proposed budget in March, and there's some things tied to his proposal as far as like modernization of the liquor control board, as well as increasing sales tax from 6% to 6.6%, and the state tax from 3.07% to 3.7%. So we're not sure if that's going to fly, so we're only proposing at this time to include 50% of what his proposed increases were because there's still a lot, a lot of uncertainty. We hope we get some level of increase, and we're going with 50% right now. And then federal, we are looking at a slight increase of about $42,000. So I just talked a little bit about state allocations. If you look at the first column, what that lists, each dollar amount that government will propose as far as an increase in each of those four categories, they total $939,000. He's proposing that Regulator received $13,223,000. We are budgeting $12,753, which is roughly a $470,000 increase. Again, 50% of what his proposals are. There are some things that are tied to him being able to generate that money for education and whether or not that passes is yet to be seen. We don't know, we don't believe that that will be passed by June 30th. That's why we're going 50%. Budgetary unknowns, state funding, federal funding. A lot of uncertainty is at the level of state funding we'll receive. Federal funding, you know, Mike can speak to that. He goes to these conferences, and they say your federal funding is at a certain level for the next four years. And then next four years, halfway through the year, they'll send a notice saying we've either been cut or reduced based on available funds. So it's always a moving target, so that's why I have that listed as budgetary unknowns. $50,000. Yeah, so it's not like you just adjust it slightly. Special education, again, you have one or two special needs students moving to the district, you'd be talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, especially again to transport them somewhere. So that's always a concern. Student enrollment, we don't know what our total enrollment will be for next year. We still have kindergarten registration will be current throughout the summer. So those are four of the unknowns. Future budgetary concerns, Peasars employer rate increase. We know we have one more year of significant increase. If you look back at the previous three years, the employer contribution has increased by 4.5% each year, okay? We're slowly trying to get to that 32% threshold that they believe that the employer needs to be contributing at. Next year, we're 25.24. In 2016-17, we have a final bump year, it's about 3.5%. Okay, and I'll show you a little pictorial or slide of the next one to tell you how much that equates to. So we have one more year coming in 16-17. After that year, it's a little, it's less than 1%. Because if you think we're almost at that 32%, so we still have one more year to get through. Future capital projects, we've talked a little bit about LES and the need for some renovations there. We've talked about a retreat. We'll be hearing more about that at the July meeting, so we want to make sure we keep that on our radar. State budgetary allocation, I won't talk anymore about that in federal. The uncertainty of those is always a concern. Act One, no longer when you develop your budgets, be reactive, you have to continue to be proactive, so we have to be continuing to plan for the next several years under Act One. You can't just all in one year adjust your millage rate based on, you know, a spike or something that you did not see coming. So, you know, we have to make sure that we operate within that index. Early retirement incentives, we have rolled through the young teaching staff. We've bought in some early retirement incentives in previous years. If we were to offer one now, it wouldn't resolve in as much of a savings as maybe we've experienced before because I don't know how many individuals could actually take advantage of that, again, because we have a young staff. Special education, again, just the uncertainty of that population and transportation is tied to that special education. So if you take Peasars employer rate increase and you look into the future, we look three years out, we know in 16-17, it's projected to increase by $542,000. Again, that's after the 50% reimbursement from the state, okay? So that equates to about 1.61 mils. If you know what our, recall what our index is, historically, we've been able to go to, not that we have, we've been able to stay under significantly, but we've had the ability to go to, you know, 1.8 or 2 mils. Well, just Peasars alone in 16-17 school year, we need up about 1.6 of those mils. So we can't lose sight of that when we're talking this year's budget unfortunately because again, it's back to Act One, you don't have as much flexibility as you have had in previous years. But the positive thing is in 17, 18, 19, those increases are declining, so we'll have a little more flexibility. So the recommendation at this time is to approve a final budget of $53,379,000. It has a millage impact of 1 mil. The average assess value of Regulator School District's residents is $25,060. So the impact of the 1 mil increase to the average homeowner within our district is $26 per year. So just like to throw it out for the main to put it in perspective when we're talking about 1 mil and how that impacts, impacts our community. And then I shot through that bracket quickly. So are there any questions? Are there any, any members of the finance committee, Eric McKay and Ron, that you'd like me to touch on that maybe I went over too quickly?
I'd just like to say that after having listened to the presentations and looked at all the numbers, the members of the finance committee did not indicate any disagreement with the idea of raising the taxes by 1 mil this year.
And to summarize, I think the thoughts of the finance committee were the uncertainty of the state subsidy. We're hoping we get 50%. We might not get 50% of what Governor Wolf is proposing. And with the knowledge that we have of what's coming down the road with Peasars in 16-17, unfortunately, you have to continue to plan, so.
Well, one of the things to remember is when Peasars reaches this peak, there are no plans for it to ever decline. We'll stay at that percentage of our payroll.
Right. Project to get to 32%, and I think it stays there until 2032, 33, and then it starts to decline by half a percent, nothing significant. So that's based on all the actual studies that have been published. Okay, well, if there are any other questions, then we'll move this forward to a vote for next week. You'll see on the agenda in front of you there, the next part which ties to this presentation is the board will have to adopt the millage levy. We're currently at 78 mils, so with the 1 mil increase up, I think it's to 79 mils. So that will be on there as well. And then the final piece is to authorize the homestead, farmstead exclusion. That's the gaming monies. We once again are receiving state funding of $754,000. Again, it's no additional revenue to the district, it's just kind of a shift. So we'll get that. And what that means for taxpayers is when they receive their tax bills, the, whatever the property is assessed at, we'll see a minus of $1,144, a reduction to the assess value. Okay, there's a form, and you have to get to that number. So their bill will be reduced by that much. So every homeowner, every approved homestead, farmstead will receive roughly a $9 reduction in their payment, and that's consistent with how it's been since this came to effect. And then the finance committee meetings are from the June 3 meeting, no tax group, year review, and that's all. Thank you.
Are there any questions on the board? The next one is meeting in Wednesday afternoon. And then the agenda is going to be. Thank you. And Jada, next week, to renew the yearly energy management system with those enterprises. We'll accept plan call for a private foundation will be in the agenda.
That is just a formality. We did the refinancing in 2005, which is now the refinancing state in 2015. We submit that they will work with the state. They reply back with your payment that they, your schedule has to report in that ordinance.
And then we're going to have an agenda to accept the commercial domestic hot water heaters or shank bill for that deal of our school. And our next, it is July 3. We're going to go with that. Okay. Our next property supply meeting will be July 7, 3:30. The center will be there.
They reply back with your payment that they, your schedule has to report in that department, so.
And then we're going to, um, have an agenda to accept the commercial Nescafe hot water heaters or a shank bill for that deal at the school. And our next.
July second.
It is July third. We're going to go with that. Okay. Our next property supply meeting will be July seventh, at three-thirty. Those are the things that we're going to do.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Student activities and recreation, the athletic committee meeting minutes will be, um, divided next week. And then the straight forward. For community relations, since Dr. George is here, because those are the things that we're doing.
Yes, we're going to have an agenda item about our pre-reduced price meal policy, which Ms. Loyola shared with us last month. We are going to talk about the national school breakfast program, have an agenda item for the national school lunch program, and Perry Parks and Rep Committee meeting, Commission meeting will be, um, attached for me.
And if I can just add to that, just to make sure you understand what those items are. The pre-reduced price meal policy is basically stating that we will follow the guidelines that are out there so that we can participate in the national school breakfast program and the national school lunch program that allows us to get subsidy and get reimbursed from the federal and state government, but you have to follow certain criteria. This is all, all you're doing is saying, we want to participate, and we recognize and acknowledge these policies, and we will follow them. For the guideline.
And then Wes Martin, the meeting here, um, says he's not here. So, we, we attach to the agenda items for the adoption of policies for senior units of funds by Regulatero School District. And then we will, um, there's a patch in the two different meetings, the May and the June, and the next, I may have a meeting for the third, seven-thirty, and I will.
Mrs. Goodby?
Yes, the, um, minutes from our previous meeting or May twenty-seventh meeting are attached for your reading pleasure. And I also would like to, um, announce that our student of the month at E W C T C is the last actively by Dr. Richard R. Student, and Mason Hearn, and he gave a really wonderful talk on the beach, and his, he recommended his student of the month, and was Rob's kind of honorable because of student of the month, or was also a Rob student impact. So, just wanted to.
We might be able to say that only the ladies were crying, so.
Oh, no, all the, all, everybody was crying. He told a wonderful story. Well, actually, his teacher told a story about his, the impact his grandfather had in choosing to become George Mason, and there was a dry eye in the room. And he's about six-four, and he was, he was proud of the rest of them, so it was, it was a good time. He was a little too close for graduation, I think, probably. Mom and dad were having a hard time. Um, our next, um, E W C T C during operating meeting will be tomorrow evening.
And this is the board policy, is that it?
Thank you. I think there's a requirement that we review our bullying and cyberbullying policy, which we use number two thirty-nine. Every month, every while, talk to us. Every three years, we're required to review the policy. Every year, we report, we do a safe school report to the state, and we include, um, an update on what we're doing with our program. So, I'm going to combine those two issues so that we have reflected in the minutes. Uh, the, um, our school program is called Bully, Proof Your School. It provides instruction and curriculum at all levels, and there are intervention materials that we can use with those victims of being bullied and those who are bullies in order to reduce their bullying behaviors. This year's focus at the elementary level has been updating and revising the curriculum and internal guidance philosophy. And the focus at the secondary level has been working with students in terms of diversity and accepting diversity in multiple, uh, levels, you know, from racial diversity, orientation diversity. Uh, we've been involved with outside consultation for all junior and senior high-level faculty, and there's been an emphasis on helping those who are different feel a sense of belonging in their schools. In addition, the district-wide school resource officers assisted us in terms of working with students who might be bullies in the building and helping them kind of, um, squelch that behavior. Each building continues, and this is the board, this is the policy. Every year, we, we review the definition of, of bullying, and it is posted throughout our schools. Uh, every year that we meet with students and explain what bullying is, which is a requirement, we also have a responsibility to share with the students the board policy, and it is included in their, um, school handbooks. Uh, it's, um, the building administrators report bullying incidents, and that is a part of our school safe school report every year. We continue to support victims of bullying and work with bullies, but done some interventions myself at the junior high school, and, and had an intern do some interventions out of their own interest building. In addition, uh, we are required to use consequences for students, and if you look on, well, on the third page of the board policy, it lists ever a million of, um, options for violations of, of a bullying policy, and I would say that we've used almost every one of those throughout the course of the last three years in addressing students who are bullied. So, I feel confident that the policy is being followed, and at this point, I'm not recommending any revisions to the policy. In, in case there are any questions, I, I think it would be all to take of board members to raise up the board, um, policy. Uh, it's very informative. I think very often the word bullying, bullying is turned around, uh, in situations where it's really not warranted, and it might be quite easy to see how our school district defines it and what actions are authorized as interventions, and it might be a visibility to read those. We've gone to a great length to help students understand the difference between conflict and bullying, because conflict is normal between children. It's what is happening when one person has more power over another, and it's happening on a regular basis, and it's impacting the child's academic performance in school. That's when we really buckle down and, and address it as bullying. Thank you. Next week, there will also be, uh, four policies. Uh, two of them have been revised, and two of them are new, and, uh, that will be on the agenda next week for intent to be drawn. That is the conclusion of our report. The woman, the side of the board members. Okay, Mr. Music.
The board member.
Technology.
Mrs. Miles, please.
We had a technology committee meeting prior to effective session, so I'll briefly review the information. I covered with the, uh, committee members, the technology budget for fifteen, sixteen school year. Under, um, Dan's direct advice, there was no increase. Uh, so we did, we did keep our, our technology budget level, which is something we talked about for multiple years, of trying to, um, get it to a level where we're able to sustain purchases. And really, as, as I was explaining to the committee, the only portion of my budget that it really had any flexibility in is actual equipment purchase. Most of my budget in terms of technology are just line items and operational things with internet connections and filtering and certain softwares. So, the bulk of our purchases this year in terms of equipment, uh, fall mainly in the elementary and junior high schools to try to, um, um, re-mute some older machines that we've had at that level. Uh, we're moving in a direction of doing Chromebooks in certain areas in actual, in, excuse me, Chromebooks in classrooms, and in other areas, Chromebooks and carts, targeting specific grade levels. Uh, we've had pilots in certain grades and building from those grades. Um, in the junior high, we're doing the same thing, supporting our ninth grade D Y O D program, and also replacing a few whiteboards that olders that were replaced when we, we did the, um, foundation grant. At the library, the main piece will, or, excuse me, at the senior high, the main piece will be for, um, the library. And I'll have more detail in a minute, didn't necessarily want to break down every piece of it during this, um, brief overview. Um, professional development, I've covered with the committee members. We had put out a couple of surveys to our teachers regarding some of the programs that the foundation has supported for us, specifically in the whiteboards that they purchased, and in the Chromebooks that we've used with the teachers in, in some of the pilot areas. And we got some great feedback on how those are being used, the frequency of use, but also some areas where there's definitely some professional development, development needed, and so we talked about offering those as some of our professional development workshop areas for our teachers. Um, our student information system, E-School Plus, is, um, basically parented by a company called Scent Guard. There's, there's a couple other pieces of it we use, Performance Plus, E-Finance Plus, we're currently implementing, and we're also going to be looking at the fourth component of it, which is I V P Plus. Uh, the benefit of having the systems all under the same roof, so to speak, is that they integrate really well together, and it provides people using the system, mainly teachers, administrators, the ability to see all aspects of a student within one system without having to hop around and go to different places. And so, um, we're going to be looking at, um, pursuing that implementation of that system. Um, with E-School Plus, we're going to be moving toward online registration in the fall. We patented that with our kindergarten earth this year, and it actually went really well. And we're also floating the idea of, um, doing online report cards at the secondary level this fall. Instead of printing them out, which is what we've historically done, we have a system already in place, Home Access Center. There was an app that we rolled out for Home Access Center this past fall, and so really, um, what we're finding is, the information gets out there on that system prior to even coming home in a printed format, and really just seems to be the preferred, um, method by which, uh, people are now receiving their information and keeping up to date. It'll, it'll provide prefered contact with the teachers, it'll have communication fees built into it, um, and that's something we'll do, um, starting this fall. We'll be communicating that out, of course. We have some exciting changes coming up with our website. We are having our website redesigned into what they call a responsive website design, and a lot of websites are moving toward this. It's responsive, meaning that the website will change based on the device that you're using. So, if you visit our website with a mobile phone that has a much smaller screen, the buttons will appear bigger, the print will appear larger. I don't know if you've ever navigated to a site when your mobile phone has the teeny tiny print, you have a difficult time clicking that perfect link. Um, so that's what responsive design website does. So, we're making some changes in the backend on our part, but we're hoping to roll that out in the fall. And along with that, we're going to couple that with a district mobile app that will go with our website. Parents will be able to download that, and we'll be able to share calendar information of, of what we post on our district website, and push notifications. So, if any of you have like a news app now on your phone, I D W T A, you'll get a little ding anytime something happens and they push that out to you, we'll be able to do that with the people that subscribe and use our app as well. So, that's, that's exciting. At least I think, but nobody else does, which is probably why I, the technology director. Um, security cameras, we've been installing the security cameras, and that process is almost completed. The majority of cameras inside are going to install, and they're currently working on the outside installations, which tend to be a little bit more difficult and cumbersome, which is why they were left till last. Um, a couple months ago, we had, um, mentioned that we were going to open the school district as a three M fingerprinting site for Kogen, and I'm happy to say we are up and running. We've processed about thirty-three applicants, so if anybody needs their fingerprint, uh, clearances, come down to district office and we can do them for you. Broadcasting production studio upgrade, again, a couple, uh, months ago, I had mentioned that to you, and, um, we had, we had mentioned it probably about fifteen years ago, that, that studio was equipped with a very nice donation from Otis Technologies and Jerry Solantros Group. And Acacia, I know, had approached Mr. LaCatio about needing to upgrade, and so, um, we were able to do that, and I was explaining to the committee that the capabilities of the equipment that we were able to align for Acacia, um, the cost is a fraction of what that original equipment was valued at, and the size of it is just unbelievably small. She has racks and racks of, of video servers, and it was all replaced with just a, a little unit, but her capabilities are unbelievable. So, she has it, she's training on it, and she's going to be excited to roll that out. And then I gave a brief update on our e-academy enrollment, um, and basically our role through the other years, they pretty much stay full. Any questions?
Can you just touch on the school wires? Is there something I have to vote on?
Oh, yes, there is a piece on, um, the agenda to approve a three-year, three-year agreement with School Wires. School Wires is the company that hosts our website. They're the ones that we're working with on responsive design and the mobile app, and they offered a customer loyalty program, and part of it was important because they dropped the E-rate funding on the website. And so, in order to do that, they, um, rolled out a customer loyalty program, and then you commit to them for three years, and they'll do a price group for three years, and historically, they've always done a two percent increase. So, they'll do a price rates for three years, they'll offer us some free training videos that you normally have to pay, um, to, to have access to, and, uh, they'll provide us with a free video promoting our mobile app branded LeVar logo. And so, I would ask that we, um, commit to be with them for three years because I don't see us changing direction with them, at least in that timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Please hold on.
Next week, there are several items on the agenda that we would, um, ask the board to move on. First is a standard annual agenda item, which gives the superintendent permission to realign staff. In addition, there are two resignations for next week from the teaching staff. One is Nicole Tonyolo, she is a second grade teacher at LES, and Kara Ratai, who is a kindergarten teacher at LES, um, both, um, have chosen to leave. One is taking a job out of state, and, uh, one is not returning from LEU. In addition, next week, we would ask the board to approve an annual driver education instructor list. Um, we do this on an annual basis, um, for driver education throughout the fifteen, sixteen school year. We will have a name for the supervisor of student support services, K to twelve, for next week's agenda, as well as for the secondary biology math teacher. We are hoping to have a recommendation for two full-time custodians, um, here in the district, as well as ask the board to approve the employment of a summer school psychologist, and her name is Melissa Colka, at an hourly rate of thirty dollars and fifty cents, that is to assist with individual student testing. In addition, we would ask that the board approve supplemental support personnel appointments to share the cheerleading, uh, positions, and that would be Abigail Wilson and Amanda Smith, as well as to approve the classified personnel hourly rate, uh, for substitutes around the district of various capacities, as they're listed there. In addition, on Monday is the school community meeting at Idowell, uh, Monday, June fifteenth, so hopefully everyone's going to attend. Um, the meeting next week is Tuesday, June sixteenth, here at seven-thirty. We only have one meeting in July, and that is Tuesday, July twenty-first, at seven-thirty. And as Sir Watson mentioned when we did the, uh, budget presentation, uh, but just to reinforce, Hank Kochet, who is an architect from Access Architecture, will be here in July to review the feasibility study from LaPro's elementary school, uh, so we hope that people will be here to hear that review. That is again Tuesday, July twenty-first, the only meeting in July. And then the August meetings are August eighteenth and August twenty-fifth. I'd also like to note and thank, um, the senior high school administration and teachers and the, um, the gentlemen from the maintenance staff, who did such a great job setting up for graduation. Um, you all may not know, but they set up for inside, and they set up for outside, and they wipe off the bench, and when it's outside, when it's raining, and they do all of that planning. We lucked out in that it was outside, outside, and I know how much additional work. We lucked out in that it was outside, and I know how much additional work that is, and we really do appreciate everybody's efforts with that. And someone announced, I think this is Cozer, that E W C T C meeting is tomorrow at June tenth, it's been moved to that date rather than at the end of the month, tomorrow at seven PM at the C C C.